Last, you know, twenty-three-year veteran school committee member, Art Warren, from Milford. And so, consistent with our tradition, we start with a moment of silence on behalf of Dr. and it's um. Thank you very much. I can also tell you the family was very appreciative of the many forms of compassionate concern raised by individual members as well as the full school committee, the calling hours and the criminal which took place, Monday and Tuesday.
Thank you very much. Moving forward, first item on the agenda, secretary's report. Secretary's report.
Chairman, review the minutes of the regular school committee mid, school committee meeting of December twentieth, twenty eighteen. On page three, second paragraph, only thing I saw was a spelling mistake on Anthony Steele's name. Aside from that, with that one correction, I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes as written, just a correction to Anthony's name.
Motion made, then Mr. Yitz. We have the second over there, I'm sorry. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes with that correction, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to acknowledge Amy's first product and her official role there. Minutes just acted. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, treasurer's report. It's over there.
Yes, treasures were distributed at the meeting this evening, so hopefully everybody has received a copy. I tried to leave them at all the chairs. So, at the end of the month of December, the tre- the treasury had five million, five hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, nine hundred seventy-one dollars and twenty-five cents, and that was distributed into local funds of four million, three hundred sixty-six thousand, four seventy-five, forty-nine cents, and project funds of one million, one hundred sixty-nine thousand, four ninety-five, seventy-six cents. During the month of December, we saw, actually, that was in January, I was gonna say we saw our first half-year of transportation received, but that was received early January. But we did continue to see that our revolving funds had received some healthy revenues, and we had a very substantial accounts payable warrant because we had money due to the state for the annual appropriation to support our pension funds. And that was, that just about wraps up the significant items in the month of December.
Motion will be approved.
Second.
Mr. Han ready? And Mr. Lavadon, the second. He's snuck in there, Joe, so. Motion made and second. To accept the treasurer's report. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, I will hand the, is our annual election, I will hand it over to Dr. Fitzpatrick.
The floor is open for nominations to serve as chair.
Quick to nominate, Mr. Aaron, of all.
The nomination's.
Second.
Any other nomination?
Full nomination's closed.
Nomination's closed, anyone in contact? Agreed, okay. Do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Okay. We should cast a vote in favor of the nomination of Mr. Hall as chair. Is there a movement, move to do?
There is.
I'm hearing loud and clear as there is. Okay, not so loud and clear, but at least I heard.
Thank you very much for electing again, and I appreciate the faith in doing the job as we move forward. Thank you. Next, vice chair, I will open the floor to nominations for vice chair.
I'll nominate Chairman Finn.
Second.
Nomination of Mr. Finn made and second.
Move nominations closed.
Second.
Motion made and second said nomination's closed, all those in favor of closing nomination, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Mr. Finn, do you accept the nomination?
Indeed I do, thank you folks, appreciate it.
Thank you. That's Dr. Patrick.
In my haste to move forward, the, this action, this segment, I would encourage the recording secretary to, each of the school committee members has the official motion before them. I believe the actions taken are consistent with the motions, but you might want to rely upon the different motion as a guide, if I may.
Yes. So, I'm going to create a motion to elect Mr. Finn as the vice chair, all those, okay, motion, sorry.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Bartlett.
Second.
Second by Mr. Attenorally. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Finn, for your service in that role. Next, secretary, I will open the floor to nominations.
I nominate Anthony.
Second.
Nomination made by Mr. Han ready, second by Mr. Kugman. For Anthony, yes, to continue in his role as reporting secretary.
Move nomination.
He doesn't have any time.
There was a motion made to close nominations, second by Mr. Attenorally. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of closing nomination, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nominations are closed. Mr. Yes, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Thank you very much. So, I'm going to create a motion for the election.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Motion made by Mrs. Broderick, second by Ms. Mitchell, to formally elect Mr. Yitz as a secretary. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Yes, you are formally elected as secretary. Thank you very much. Next, the assistant treasurer. Although I see those are technically by appointment, I'm looking open to the democratic process.
Who had that position?
That chair.
Jeff, do what you want.
Pardon me?
I'll make the motion. Jeff?
Second.
Mr. Han ready, do you accept the?
Yes, I do.
Motion closed nomination.
Second.
Motion closed, closed nomination made by Mr. Bartlett, second by Mr. Finn Raleigh. All those in favor of closing those nominations, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, seeing as it says an appointment and there is no competing interest involved. Mr. Han ready, you're hereby appointed as our assistant treasurer. Thank you very much. Payroll AP warrant signer, move three. This past year was.
I'll do it again.
I'm fine with it again.
Mr. Bartlett, Ms. Mitchell, Mr. Han ready. We'll hereby appoint as payroll signer, payroll and AP warrant signer. You'd also need an alternate, does anybody would like to?
I'll continue.
Go ahead, no point not, Mr. Brazza, as the alternate payroll and AP warrant signer. Thank you very much for allowing me to speed the process forward. Next up, student recognition, Dr. Fitzpatrick.
Well, as tradition has indicated, I'd like to ask, since we've been talking to Mr. Steele, if you'd join me. Well, let me just give an overview. As the school committee notes, one of the most delightful activities that we celebrate is the various recognitions of our incredibly successful students in so many different, together various academic vocational skill development, community service, and the right of other. One of our professional organizations that we take pride in being affiliated is the Massachusetts Vocational Association, and they provide student awards for outstanding career and technical educations. The award will be in the amount of five hundred dollars, and it's awarded at the Mass Vocational Association Conference during a Saturday night banquet, and I'm sure we haven't yet done that, we'll connect the families, talk to the specifics of that. The criteria for this includes a personal commitment to career and technical education, and to the program in which the student is enrolled, success within that clinical affiliation, projects, related work, or experiences, equal success on the academic side of the fence, demonstrated by above-average scores in theory components of the program which the student is enrolled, evidence of good, solid character and leadership via at least the evidence of two written references, although I assure you, we're quite familiar with these candidates, and by individuals having regular contact with students, and involvement in the school and community service of other experiences that challenge the student, evidenced by at least one letter from the agency which the student has participated. Okay? I'd like to give Anthony the opportunity to get into the specifics of the, of the individuals, please.
Sure, thank you. Next, we're to choose two MVA recipients. One is a non-traditional career technical student, and the other a traditional, and I go by gender and the career that they're in. Very proud to announce that Juliette Logan is here with us. Come on up, Juliette, is our non-traditional recipient this year. She's a senior in our auto collision program. Come on up here and stand right in the middle while we talk about you. Senior in auto collision and repair and refinishing. She is a peer mentor, she's also a member of National Technical Honor Society, the C Club, the Motorsports Club. You also may recognize her with a helmet on. She's played football for us for four years, also lacrosse for four years. She participates in various community service activities, few of which member of the VFW in Bellingham, posts seven-two-seven-two. She also does a lot of things for veterans by volunteering for two organizations, the Poppy Drive and also Operation Stand Down Rhode Island. So, certainly, you know, we have a lot to be proud of this young lady. She's represented our school well, she's an exceptional student, great technician, actually, as well. I can't say enough about that. I believe after graduation, you're continuing at Marty's Automotive where you currently work.
Yeah.
Also, planning to attend a college down the road when you can further get your education and maybe even find somebody to pay for it, that's even better. But, ladies and gentlemen, Juliette Logan.
I miss a lot of things about this young lady, okay, but one of the things that strikes me is that, you know, we obviously have a Super Bowl-winning football team, the charges out on the field, you know, and with all kinds of joy, jubilation, and they fly out of the locker room, and then just moments later, out of the other locker room comes the, basically, quickly catching up with all the other players. You know, you picture the stature of what one plays, like, what are you looking at, a linebacker here, or, you know, maybe a defensive back? Oh, no, my folks, this woman gets down and hikes the ball. She centers the ball, okay? Usually, the team on the, on the other side of this is the team, the players wear the largest of the things, and so, that's the position she's played, and it was, it was amazing, and it was, it was just hot blooded, yeah, just watch her charge out there. There, there were times, I must say, like in the same spirit of Notre Dame, going, Rudy, 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 there you go, shoot him, shoot him, shoot him. And to the degree of influence, we were, we were happy when she, you know, made her way out there to the field to contribute. So, it was a pleasure to watch her, and everything is done.
Well deserved. Congratulations.
We have two.
Our traditional student is Adam Kavanaugh. I know that it's not a face unfamiliar to you, as he's presented to you several times. Adam is actually at the Model UN this weekend, or this week, I should say, it's a multi-day event. Just a few words on Adam, obviously, another outstanding student at BBT. He is a senior in our business technology, our entry entrepreneurship program. He is currently serving, as you may recall, as the Skills USA National Treasurer. Quite rare, and quite an honor for any school to have a national skills officer. He also represents the students. Here is the class of two thousand nineteen vice president of his, of his class. He's a member of the Leo Club, the Model UN, DECA, National Honor Society, National Technical Honor Society, Student Council. He's also on the Senate Youth Advisory Council. I don't know how he finds time to do all this stuff, but he does, a pretty remarkable young man. And he's earned the President's Volunteer Service Award and the Gold Standard Volunteers up in, from up in Senior Center. He's worked at the Milford Food Pantry, he's volunteered for the Be Like Brit Foundation, and who knows, there's probably more to this list, but he's a hard guy to keep up with. But certainly very proud of Adam Kavanaugh, his achievements, his commitment to all of the ideals of the MVA award, and we're very fortunate and blessed to have these two great students represent us this year in our nominations.
In Adam's case, it was an absolute delight to see him enter our system four years ago. Personally, there were signs of some shyness, but confidence, and he, he reached out to us and asked us to support some of his aspirations, some of his competitions, from speaking, elocution competitions to others, that led to, as an officer in these different organizations that Anthony has mentioned, and also to serve as kind of a special aide to some of the legislative contingent that represent our district. Just eager to expand his resume and every possible source, looking at a variety of options for furthering his education, and we would not be surprised to see a community servant in the making, in whatever capacity he decides to pursue. Adam Kavanaugh.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, student representatives. I know I saw Logan back there.
I only have a few updates for you guys today. So, our big focus right now is the polar plunge that's coming in Hyannis in March, and MASC as a whole. Our first big thing is our excellence book. Every year we complete our excellence book in hopes of gaining Gold Council of Excellence within MASC. Another thing that we have been working on is a, let me check my notes, I have all this. Oh, last weekend, our E-board members, we attended MASC Balchi in support of the Special Olympics, and my last big update for you guys is, last Friday, we organized the Patriots Day, Spirit Day at BBT. Go Pat. That's it, that's all I got for you.
It worked.
We should do it tomorrow, okay?
Any questions for the student, student members?
So, coming up now in the spring, is there any significant fundraisers or anything that would be of interest to us?
Not right now. Our focus really just is MASC and getting my E for Hyannis, since I'm also running for the state board, too. There's a lot of support I'm getting from my E-board. Things will pick up again towards the end of the year. Right now, it's just kind of a slow time.
If you will keep in mind that it would major waves in Thanksgiving and the holidays that.
That was last year.
They're selective in how many times they hit the public for donations, let me say it that way.
Logan, are you doing the polar plunge?
Yes, I am. Well, depending on my parents.
What body of water is that?
I don't know, I don't know exactly. It's in Hyannis. It's one, it's one of the beaches. I don't know.
Oh, so it's the ocean?
It is the ocean, yes. I don't know which.
I think it's actually Creteau Beach.
Oh, Creteau, Hyannis.
I didn't plunge last year. It was, it was too cold and I wasn't going in. Everyone's running back to the bus, so I'm not, I'm good.
The minutes will reflect that you were considering, but not yet committed.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other questions for Logan? All right, seeing that, great job, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Have a great time.
You too. Next item on the agenda, the out-of, the out-of-country trip for the Be Like Brit Foundation. Yeah, I was gonna say, I see Becky, and I guess Cheryl Lynn on the list.
The chairman of the committee, those who were present at the previous presentation on this particular program and the foundation, and there were some questions that were raised in the sense of comfort and the security of the students by school committee members, and so, this is a follow-up to the questions that were raised to hopefully respond to those. Welcome to our school.
I mean, I know we asked the questions, I mean, I wasn't sure if you came ready with them, or if you wanted us to re-ask them.
A re-ask and what? Yeah.
Does anybody know?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, too. Go ahead, Doc.
As, as a witness to the previous presentation, which I thought was very, well, well done, okay, and certainly a compassionate and motivational opportunity, we seek those regularly. What I heard was that in, in this era of unrest in different countries, in the transition of their leadership, that some committee members were looking for additional, they loved the program, they were looking for additional insurance relative to the entry and exit of, of the country, okay, and whether or not the, the committee had an understanding with you that why you would speak about a given country's safety today, as you know it, but you would obviously have to be getting periodic checkpoints or, or updates, well, as you get closer to the trip, you know, before you will back up on plane or whatever else, okay? So, that's the question I was, so they were, in, in the sense of protecting the students under the jurisdiction of the school committee, they were looking to learn more about the process and the information way that you gather information to ensure the safety of the travel, entry, housing of the students. Is that a summary of the question you heard last time?
Yes, yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Shirley Engel, and I'm one of the co-founders of the Be Like Brit Foundation, and so, I appreciate you wanting to come to Haiti, and I appreciate you asking questions. I think that's really great. I will do my best, and any questions that you have, we're an open book, and I'm an open book, so I want you to ask as many. I think if I tell you what we do for all of our, anyone that goes on a service trip to Haiti, we call them Brysoneris, after my daughter Brittany, so everything's about Brits, so Brysoneris. Just to give you a little bit of background, up to now, we've had over fourteen hundred Brysoneris come to Haiti. Right now, from, now until September, we actually have a Brysonary trip every single week going into Haiti. What we normally do with anyone that goes, whether you're a school group, a church group, individuals come, you know, a few families come, and there's, we have a variety of people, all ages from age sixteen all the way up to seventy-five that come to Be Like Brit. So, when anyone comes, they select a week, there's an application online that they have to fill out. We do background checks on everyone, Korean story checks on everyone, because they are, they'll be around our children as well. What we do then is, we have our own team, and we would meet with the group as a whole. Whoever, I know schools are a little bit different, but so, schools would decide which students they think feels appropriate to go on this trip, and they would, they would kind of do the background, like, because if there's twenty students and there are only fourteen spots, then you would have to decide which students came. But then we would meet the group and give them as much information as we possibly could. We go over what to bring, how to, how the travel day's gonna go, and everything that is expected of them. We have constant contact with the group. We have, someone from our organization, it's either myself, or we have three other leaders that actually take the group in. And so, once a group goes in, I'll just use myself, if I just, you know, I'm gonna go in with them, we would meet at the airport together. We go into Haiti together. We have our own security team that meets us at the airport. We have our own vehicles that take us into Haiti, take us right out to the Be Like Brit Foundation. We stay there, we stay onsite, everything onsite. We are an earthquake-proof certified building. We have the same seismic standards as San Francisco. It was really important to us that we build that kind of a building for obvious reasons, and so, SGNH did the start, was a structural engineering firm, and they certified our building, and so, that's where the students would stay. When anyone's in Haiti, we have security with us, and it's not because something has happened, it's just we want to make sure that nothing does happen, and in the nine years that we've been going down there, if at any time we feel it's unsafe, there's unrest, it's not, it's not good for anyone to go down there, we will cancel a trip. For Brit's dad, Len, and I, our top priority is security for anybody. This is not, you know, it's a great experience, but it's not something fun, it's not an amusement park, and we're very well aware of different things that can happen, so security is our top priority, and we have, you know, we have our own people in Haiti, we have our staff in Haiti, and so, there's always contact if there's something going on. So, we've only had to cancel three trips in all of these years, and, and if we have to cancel at last minute, we will cancel it, and we kind of tell the groups upfront, this is what it is, 'cause we're not taking any chances. And, just to let you know, so I have two other sons, they come to Haiti on a regular basis, and so, for me, Haiti, if it was, if I didn't feel it was safe for them to go in, I wouldn't let my other two children go in. Can I guarantee anyone's safety? I can't, but no one here can guarantee all of our safety here. We put everything that we can in, we do the best that we possibly can. I will say that we have an emergency plan in Haiti in case something happens, another, say, earthquake or something destructive. We actually have a satellite phone, which is really important to us, 'cause when the earthquake happened, the group that Brittany was with didn't have a satellite phone, and so, we have a satellite phone. We test it once a month, we have to put an emergency plan in place. We have a partnership with a company down there, so if there's a helicopter, if there was a real emergency, a medical emergency, and we had to get someone out of the country, we can do that. We have, part of the Brysonary programs, they do have, we have insurance, and that part of the insurance is, if there was that kind of emergency, a medical emergency or whatever, that we could get them out of the country as well and bring them back to Florida. I know I just touched on it, but please ask lots of questions.
No, I mean, I appreciate that you right up front say you can't guarantee anything. I get, I get very leery. I'm a lawyer. I get very leery when people say guaranteeing anything, because you can't guarantee it.
I can't. I want to, but I can't.
No, 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 and I appreciate that, right out of the gate, 'cause that is something pretty important. Anthony?
You'll follow if I have something that's a little slightly different.
Two questions, just for insight, we're supporting your request and complimenting you on the entire endeavor, by the way. Our task force required?
Absolutely, yes, yep.
And our inoculations also recorded?
Yes, yep. They are, every, all those little, I don't wanna say little details, but everything like that. We have waivers that have to be signed, there's lots of information. It's not just, hey, I'm going to Haiti, we're gonna go. These are the kinds of steps that we definitely go through with everybody. You have to get shots. We make sure that everyone goes to their own, like their own clinic, their travel clinic, because, you know, you might have traveled somewhere, other people might not have traveled, so they have to decide what you, what you need, and they, and they give you whatever shots that each person individually needs. So, they need to do that, they have to sign off that they have received them before they come to Haiti. The more than likely they get far, a drawing blank on the name. Say it again? Yeah, I can, I'll, I'll think of it, I'll come back to it.
The nature of the question was to increase the comfort zone, if you will, I mean, that these are steps that are built in.
Absolutely, yep.
One of the questions I had, I remember flipping through the pamphlet, and it kept, we're a vocational school, our students learn technical skills, of course, they're not professionals at it. They learn and get certified under different OSHA regulations and certifications. In the, in the literature, I remember reading something about construction, or those types of activities fall under the local, local jurisdiction in Haiti, it's not OSHA, it's not anything like that. How, how is safety handled in any type of a construction environment where our students are used to a rigorous OSHA, you know, adherence? I don't, if we're using power tools and other things, what type of safety protocols do you have that make sure things are, are safe in what they're doing?
So, no power tools are used onsite, and so, the size, the size of the home is really a fourteen by sixteen, it's really the size of a shed. We pour concrete, everything is done by hand down there. We pour, like, the first day is usually concrete, we call bucket brigade, so that's done by hand. The, the walls are, you know, built by hand with, you know, hammer and nails. We have our own Haitian staff that work with our group every day, and the, they, our staff in Haiti, put the roof on our, the students or anyone that goes to, that builds the home does not do the roofing or anything like that. And so, I will say that Brit's dad, Len, was a builder here in central Mass. And so I will say that Brit's dad Len was a builder here in central Mass for over thirty years, and so we understand, like, putting systems into place and safety, you know, is top priority. And we have this expression, it's Haiti, I know you don't wanna hear that, but it's just, OSHA doesn't really exist in Haiti, but Engel standards are in Haiti, and so that's really important. Well, because I mean, you know, like, my daughter's name is on.
But there is a safety program there, just to make sure that what they're doing, as much as possible, they're following some safety protocol?
Yes, I mean, as much as possible.
So, I mean, it may not be what Haiti standards are expecting, you guys are putting on another level above that to meet your standard, even if it isn't, you know, not the basic level of Haiti standards.
Right. And I understand, you know, obviously on a job site, and I understand that, but we're not, there's no electrical, there's no electricity, there's no plumbing, this is literally four walls with a window and a door.
I was thinking, you know, being a young student, kind of overwhelmed by, you know, what they're doing, that's a, wanna make sure that they're focused on, at the time, being safe in the activities, rather than, you know, forgetting about that because they're overcome by the scenery and being in a, you know, different area.
And also, I was gonna say, and also maintaining the safety standards that we're teaching them here.
Right, and I think that's really important, so I, and then, please don't think that I'm like, be liberal, but no, I'm not doing that at all, because I do understand, we have, we all have certain standards, and but for us, that all the safety standards that we could put into place in Haiti are there. And so, again, they're not climbing on a roof, they're not going on a ladder, you know, to put the roof on, they're not cutting with a saw, an electrical saw, and everything is really done by hand. The job site itself is, you know, if it's any bigger than this area right here, so everyone's right there, and it's really a lot more, the home is really a lot more than just about being, about building, they'll be in there, and then part of the community, they'll see what they're building, and so they'll understand what they're building, how important it is that they're actually building a home. And the family that we build for is usually onsite, helps us, some of them, you know, get right in there, others just watch, and that's, and that's part of the journey as well.
Do you all say that, then? Which one?
You speak of security, can you embellish on who and what the type of security?
So we have our own, we have, like, Port-au-Prince police officer that, when we leave the airport, he comes with us. We have our own security as part of Be Like Brick that travels with us. When we're onsite, Bijou is his name, Bijou comes with us onsite, and so we have, we have that there.
They train?
The Port-au-Prince police is trained, and we actually have, so our entire facility of Brit's home, it's about three acres, and we've built a wall around the entire area, and so we have our own security in order to get in and out. And that's like a Haiti thing, like, I hate to say, it's just like your home, like, put locks on your door, you know, there's certain things that we all put into place just because, you know, you don't want it to happen, so that's what we've done, is make sure, and so we have our own security onsite that twenty-four seven as well. And the wall that we've built on top, we've put beautiful Borgon velia, but it hides the broken glass and nails, things like that at the top, so, it's just, it's just a precaution, you know. I have sixty-six beautiful children, and the mother and me will come out, and so we're just making sure. But I will say that we're very fortunate, we've been in Grand Waub where we are, and like I said, it's nine years, and the community, we're part of the community, and the community knows that we're doing everything that we can to help the community, and they're very good to us as well.
When you?
Yes, yes, yep.
When you mention security, are you talking to one person, or several people that are there?
You mean onsite?
Onsite with you, when you, when you leave from the airport to your.
So on the airport, we probably have two or three people out of the airport, and then when we're at Brit's home, you know, two or three security guards, like, but twenty-four seven.
So you have one every eight hours, is that what you're telling me?
No, two to three every twelve hours.
You have to shift that as two to three, and they rotate twelve hours?
Yes, yes.
Doc?
Most of these conversations are about our students, but take good care of our people, we like them too.
No, yeah, shoot, right, that's terrifying.
We value them.
I always wondered if that was the case.
Welcome aboard, brother.
They do encourage, you know, and I, like I said, I do appreciate, it's, it's, it's never, you know, it's Haiti, there will always be a travel ban on Haiti, and it's not because it's a dangerous place, everyone, you know, people go to Chicago, and Chicago is a lot more dangerous than Haiti, sometimes you only hear the bad things, but I'm not dismissing what goes on in Haiti, but they will always have a travel ban on there because of there's no infrastructure. And so, but where we are, we've got a waterfall, nanotechnology water filtration system donated to us, and we have all clean water at Brit's home, so, and the food that they eat is safe, the water that they eat is safe, and then, you know, the parents, we have, we invite the parents to these informational meetings as well, because we wanna put their minds as much as possible to ease. And another thing is, is once they're down in Haiti, we have a Facebook page, and we tell everyone, again, this is all on the information, you know, we want you to go on Facebook, and even if you're not on it, you can go to facebook.com/be-like-brick. And we put up photos at the end of the day, so that all the parents, all the grandparents, the aunts, that wanna make sure, like, are they okay? And it's really important to us, because it's nerve-wracking, it really, really is. And so we try to understand that, but let them still be really immersed in the Haiti culture. So we don't let them on the internet or anything like that, and there's no TV down there as well, so, just so. And they make it the week.
Any other questions?
I just had one quick question for you. You had mentioned the nine years that they've been doing this, and I commend you on that, and then the effort. The question I had revolves around, you said there were three trips that were canceled. Without getting too explicit, what was the level that rose that had to be canceled? Was it a US call to no travel in that area, was it just something that you folks said it's too dangerous, we don't want you there?
It's probably a preconization of both, it was really a few years ago, one this past summer, but canceled because we knew that there was gonna be some riot protesting going on, and that's the one thing, they tell you that they're gonna protest, and so with the people that we get some information from, we knew that it was not gonna be safe, and so we canceled that. And then, other than that, it was at, around the time of the elections. And, you know, there's no voice, they don't have a vote, there's not voting like we have, and so the only way that they can, their voices can be heard is by protesting, and so that's what they, they did. And so, both of those trips kind of got delayed, but they went, all the people went on different trips, it just wasn't that specific that they were signed up for.
I was just wondering how you were notified, and I think you've explained that as well as what the.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I said, I was wondering how you were notified of that, and you've explained that much of part of the fabric of the community.
Absolutely.
I'm sure if they hear some things they're gonna be telling you about.
Yep, right, and so our Haiti director down there, Love, you know, she oversees it, you know, she's down there, but like I said, Brit's dad and I are very involved, and it's just, again, safety is our top priority.
Indeed, thank you.
The way things are going, protesting may be the new way in the United States as well.
Any other questions, comment? I mean, I believe we had, it was a conditional approval.
That's my understanding.
I wasn't sure if we were ready to remove the conditions or not, that's, I mean, I know we've.
I'll make a motion to remove them, if everybody here feels.
Is any other questions?
Motion that they made, and second, to remove the conditions on the prior approval, and give it a full formal approval, I think would be the.
Yeah, I'm gonna suggest is, what I heard the committee do was raise this question in need for greater comfort, but I think what was just happened is, it addressed the condition that was raised, okay? And so now you're at closure relative to the response.
Right.
It's not a removal of the condition, you have the answer to the condition.
Well, right, it was a conditional, now we'll give it a full, a full approval.
It is that, it is that.
Make it simple.
Nothing is simple.
And if at any time you ever have any questions, please reach out, like, that's what we're there for. Things come up all the time, whether it's here, our parents, or students, we are an open book, and I, on our website, it says, contact us, I'm us, I get everything, so I will respond to you, you know, make a phone call, or whatever, and just to put everyone's mind as best as we possibly can, okay?
Any questions, comments on the motion as presented before? No, I mean, we do appreciate it, I mean, you know, it is a very, you know, we're, we have a great deal to deal with, and worried about this, I mean, our people, the students, and the parents put a lot of faith in us, so that's, so I really appreciate you coming out here and making those statements, and answering their questions, and trying to address their concerns as best as humanly possible, like you said.
Right, right, but that's good that everyone's nervous, I think that's, that's okay, like, that's, that's okay.
Any other questions, seeing none? All those in favor of a full approval for this trip, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Two opposed? Mr. gets a Mr. hand running. Motion carries by majority. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mom.
Next on the mommy agenda, vocational presentation, Mr. Norton and Mr. Boyzler. Thank you very much for your patience, gentlemen. Don't worry, no matter how many times people use that, everybody has the same problem when they try to turn it on.
What's working about temperature, you want me to take that one, boy?
No. Mike, it's a network, every time somebody tries to.
Anthony, the last time, the last.
Okay, so the switch here, you have to shut off and turn on, then you have to wait a moment, the blue light will turn on, and then you can turn the projector. It's just.
Hop on one foot, tilt your head to the left, and turn in a circle. Thank you very much. No, it's popping up right now. Man, you are in a hurry.
This is gonna be an hour presentation, so.
Have a cup of coffee, Curtis. All right, everybody, this is warmed up.
All right, thank you for having us here to present our kids what we do in electronics, and all the accomplishments they actually have done. I hinted this out, hopefully anybody received one of these. I know you have.
Okay, thank you very much.
And those are handed out to all the parents that come through and stuff, it just gives you a little breakdown, electronics, it is the courses we give, and a little literature about that. So, I'd like to start, first of all, how are we doing? This is what our status is for students in our shop, we're at present sixty-eight kids. You can see the breakdown from males and females. Once you get our freshmen in, this is the first day, we get a new freshman, we sit them down, because we are like a family, we make sure, everybody's, we have a small space, everybody has to work together, so this is a nice first day, getting to know all the kids. Trend lines, what's been going on since two thousand fourteen to now, you will notice this line here, that's just been steady, we've been maxed out at eighteen for all those years, the last eight years. The red is how many people want us, the blue is how many people picked us to come here in the first place. So the red line just keeps saying, these want us, this one wants us after, they do other exploratory. Co-op jobs the kids are at right now, we have one working as engineer over Troya Helen, we have one working as a installer in Greenwood, which are all the fire trucks, they install all the electronics. We just had five get picked up by CTS. They came to the school, they noticed that, hey, we're your neighbors, they're right on Hopkins Street, we're gonna pick one kid for co-op, once they came through, they wanted five of our kids, they would have taken more, they could have done it. First thing they did, they set up these cubicles for them, they're treating them just like engineers. They sat them down, the problem with their staff is it's our staff, they wanna get the knowledge out of their brains onto paper, because they're just keeping their heads, so these kids, that's what they're doing at the CTS. We just had Copland Corporation actually come into our school two days ago, they took a tour, they have eighty jobs openings they can't fill, and so they're pushing for all employers they can get, so they stop by. They have five companies in Westboro, and one in Worcester, because Copland actually makes up a bunch of them, one's on Columbia Tech, and the other one's in Worcester for the biomedical. So they're looking for a lot, so right now, we have only four left kids that wanna go on a co-op, they're gonna take all four, so. The last six years of skills from our shop these kids came from, this is all national medals. So get the national medals, you have to go to the districts, go through the state, and take the best. This is how well we've done, we actually own a robotic search and rescue one, for gold and two bronze, the mobile robotics. We were supposed to test it for the worlds, but they didn't have any advisors do that, so they postponed that last year for the mobile robotics. And the engineering, this is the big one, even though they took seven, this is the first time we competed in the engineering firm, those three kids now are putting in for a patent, they're putting a patent on the fire exiting of a building, and what it is, where most of the exits are high, you gotta see it, there's smoke, has to get to ground, so they developed a whole system to exit people out of the building, not only for smoke, but also if there's a gunshot going off, it would tell the people how to get up. And what that is, there'll be lines on the floor, just like in an airline, you see all the green lights on the floor, well, this will be green to go the way you need to go, and red for the wrong way. So for the firefighters, they'll be running in with a red, everybody else will be running green. So if there's other fires or gunshots, it will tell you, the hallways will light up green or red, depending, don't go in that way, and if it blinks blue, it just tells you, you're on your own, find your own way, whatever you gotta do. So, those are three scenarios.
If it's blue, it says you're on your own.
Did I look at, what are our kids doing? When they go into college, do they actually graduate? This is a class in two thousand fourteen, so in four years, these people have graduated that I know of, I don't know of the rest, haven't been in contact, but we had six kids graduating from WPI, because that class, a bunch of them decided to go to WPI. So we have two that actually double majored, they're graduating this year with electrical robotics engineering. We have three in electrical engineering, and one in business. Then we have another person out of Hartford, getting electrical mechanical engineering, Western England, electrical engineering, and Emerald Ridley University. And the other thing is, this one, the kid got the full scholarship for ROTC, he's actually got his commission, so he's doing, he went through all four years, and they paid him for his food and everything else through the ROTC program. So this school produces lots of great kids, and this is just one year, this can go on for year and year, it brings all the stuff, it's kind of short, so.
I would just say is, because I know this comes up in some of the conversations, I mean, it's fair to say that even though they went on to college, they were continuing the education that started with their electrical department, right? Even the business student, because to run your own business, it's a helpful.
Well, they did business because they already gained the technical background.
Right.
So when they said business, like, because he wants to go into the engineering field, but be the manager and stuff.
Right, but it was a continuation of the education, they didn't suddenly decide they wanted to go off and do something else completely, it's.
Right.
They went to the next level of their education within that field.
Correct, and that's, and that's a trend that happens in our shop a lot, they know what they want, we teach them, they go on, they continue on, and then they come back. So we get a bunch of them that show up, and try to help the school as much as they can. These are all the different colleges that the kids have graduated, not just one, but all the ones they've graduated from. So we've had people from West Point, from Naval Academy, Georgetown, MIT, just had a mother come to me, kid wanted to get in MIT, couldn't get in, was all upset, went to university alone, end up, now he's working there, because he's got his doctor's degree in electrical engineering. So, he found his way, because the government picked him up, he was working on the satellite program, very good job, and now he's working for MIT doing government stuff, so. Certifications real quick, we have ETA, which is a national test, if kids wanna take it, there's four different tests, and you get certified in each, and if you do all four, you get fully certified as electronic technician. Then we have the product lead way, which has been new to us, for the last couple of years, they take the DE, and now they're taking the IED, which is digital electronics, and introduction engineering design, and then we do the OSHA ten hours, those are all certifications our kids do, and some of the related jobs, they'll be up there. This is done by a sophomore girl, she went to WPI, they had a seminar there for the Women Impact Network, this is the study that she was doing, she worked with another young lady, and then had two mentors, she was doing the working of a robotics legs, getting them to move and work. So, the level of the kids, they're studying, she wrote all this up, did the print, and this has been up in our shop, because she was proud of it, and just put it up in our shop, just to show people what they're actually doing. Just to show people what they're actually doing, more than just in here. We teach them to go out and even learn more, because that's the nature of here. It's not like they, oh yeah, we're here to school, there's a lot more, and thanks to the school for all the resources they give us, that's this that gets done. Is there any questions I can answer about our shop? Yes?
Michael, the co-op opportunities, has that, have you seen that increase with the better economy, or has it remained steady? I know you had five from one company there, but has that, has the opportunities increased for the kids?
In this valley, it has been that way for years, if it wasn't, one, for years it was always like waters, they were taking a lot of our kids. We have LENS, we have EMC that took a lot of our kids, so as one might go down, there's more that's popped up. Like right now, Copland, they have eighty jobs just waiting. So I went to other shops, and they're probably being taken from other different shops.
Cool, good, thank you.
In putting together the curriculum for the electronics, electrical program here, I guess, how do you go about doing that? As an engineer myself, especially in electrical, things are changing so fast, I mean, fifteen years ago, you wouldn't even bring up even things like solar power. As you're developing the curriculum, how do you put that together so that you kinda stay rooted in the fundamentals, but also kinda stay with some of the more emerging technologies, so that the students have a, kind of a little bit of an introduction as to some of the newer things that are coming along, how do you, how do you put that together and stay current?
Well, what we do, we have your basic, four years, the DC, AC, semiconductor, and digital, that's the core, that's your backbone. Then the kids can go any direction they want, and we let them go, anything they wanna get involved in, we will help. So if they wanna learn satellite, they wanna learn telecommunication, they wanna be programmers, they wanna become mechanical, everyone will be different. We show them the backbones, this is it, and then spread out, what do you, makes your interest, and that's what gets these kids going.
How do they go into those areas, do you set them up with projects where they can...
We do, yep, so what are our interests, I says, pick your pet project, whatever they want, and we have kids come up with all different things. And that's what keeps them on all the technology, and that's why we stay self-fluent with everything, and robotics is another way, because that's always ever-changing, and they have to learn programming, they have to learn mechanics of it, so it's always fresh for them.
And those specialties that they investigate, that becomes part of their portfolio?
It is. So when they leave, it's part of their, because they have to do lab work, just like engineer would do, and they just study, hey, I wanna do this as a widget, and they start learning, that's why we have kids coming up with patents. About this kid that's graduating from Hartford University, he came up with a PTO for the robotics, and that's the one we sold to Andy Marks. So, all this stuff comes from kids, and he was a sophomore at the time, he said, hey, let's build it. Most people would say, no, 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 no. I was giving whatever they need to get them going, to learn all this stuff.
Doc? Yeah, I'd like to just apply the program, it's nice to pursue what we call industry-recognized credentials, I'm kind of building you merit badges, if you will, but, but the projects and competitions that might references, either nationally, regionally, organized by colleges, create an opportunity, plus the advisor community, for relevancy and for updating, and they have their own skills that are built in, so teaming, logistical organizations, and countless extra hours. But when you look at the conflation and the addition of the industry-recognized credentials or other national standards to the credential earned at Valley Tech, which has enough value in its own, you really create someone that, Copland or anybody else, you can't wait, give us eighty-one of them if you can, kind of thing, and that's what happens, right, it's a, it's a driving currency updating process that's built in.
Yeah, this doesn't sound like the electronics I graduated from in seventy-six.
I don't think they have an oscilloscope in the, in the building. They don't rely upon military, they don't rely upon military donations in the same manner that you do.
Any other questions for Mr. Norton?
Sorry, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, Curtis, now it's your turn.
So this is gonna be quick.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Oh wait, hold on, Anthony, take notes.
You can't be quicker than Russ.
First item is line item transfers, which we do not have this afternoon, I should say this evening, but we do have two donations, the first is a laser engraver for our painting and design technology program. A little background on this, and it's very brief, they have been putting forth a recommendation for the purchase of the equipment under Perkins. It's a pretty large expenditure, and we're not sure if we'll make it in. The instructor Tom has been to training this last week, and they did have an opportunity to get this piece of equipment in, so it at least avoids the need to purchase this under Perkins at this time, we're still pursuing the purchase of a piece of new equipment, 'cause this is older, but it will allow them to get started, so with that, we'll take a...
I'll take the motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Levin, second by Ms. Mitchell, to accept the laser engraver. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, it is hereby accepted.
This next one is from Mr. Consigli, and it is a two thousand three soft convertible. We weren't quite sure if it was functioning, so we had it towed here, the car is running, which is a great thing, and, and they are going to be able to use it in their shop for the next couple of years.
However, he was responsible for towing it.
That's correct.
No, it was towed here, but not by him.
That's correct.
We're not a junk dealer.
But, but in order for us, and we told him that was the circumstance, we didn't wanna take something that we knew wasn't working, but we needed to get it here to find out, and indeed it was.
So make the motion, Curtis.
Motion made by Ms. Mitchell, second by Mr. Attender, all the questions, comments, discussions? Do you have something else?
That concludes your report, right?
Well, after we vote on it, yes.
No, go ahead, take that. The only reason I mentioned who, who was responsible for towing it was part of my negotiations with the person.
All those in favor of accepting the car as a donation, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'd like the committee to be aware that at this juncture, among other daily responsibilities, Curtis is working on the next major capital skills grant for the governor's office, he's working on the Masswool Building Authority Statement of Interest for another, for the next roof component, with money that we hope to self-fund, and he's working on the FY twenty budget, with budget so much and the other things, just some of the things.
And another grant to govern the Revolutionary War.
Yeah, the implementation of the...
But I would like to point out that this wasn't one of his shortest... This wasn't one of his shortest presentations, so I think he needs to learn what the definition of brief is.
But you'll be glad to know, this one is a half a million dollars, back up to the old levels, the last one was only one thirty-five, so...
Curtis, Curtis, the committee's under the impression that, I made a point to have you shot in your presentation, so you'd have more time to do these other assignments.
There you go, drive it hard, bud.
Thank you very much, Curtis. Next item up, Mr. Steele.
Welcome, everybody, good evening. Let's see, in your package you will find, for ten point one, the proposed two thousand nineteen twenty school calendar.
We're talking about next school year already?
We are, it's halfway over already. It hasn't even snowed yet.
I got, I got emotional acceptance, Mr. Handwriting on the calendar.
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Mitchell, all the questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Calendar is approved.
Thank you, sir.
It's my calendar.
So you'll find it's the usual standard issue. Hundred ninety-five for staff, one ninety-three for students, with the usual vacays. Alright, next item, ten point two, practical nursing graduation update, that's coming up very soon, January twenty-third.
If you have a chance to attend, feel free to, it is a wonderful event to see these families there, it's a part of their...
We usually see our representatives, local legislators usually come, show their support as well, congratulate their constituents from their various regions. But yeah, once again, you're all welcome to come, it is the other graduation that we conduct each year, certainly proud of that program, and it's also quite an achievement for those students that participate in that, so... Any questions or comments on practical nursing graduation, yes sir?
I was answering a question, we've invited the committee members who wish to join us for that event?
We just did, yep.
Okay, that's fine, okay, nice to back to stop by, okay, if you have an opportunity, so, thank you.
Okay, moving on to ten point three, the football banquet update, actually I will give those to you, you'll pass those around, that's coming around, oh, I didn't, I didn't mean to put you to work, I just gotta take one and pass it down.
It makes me feel a little buzzed, gotta be moving around a little bit. The ice fish isn't doing his back any good.
Well, the banquet is going to be on March twelfth. What I've just, which I was passing out there is a site that we set up, it's a vending site through the graphic edge, so that you can get your state championship wares, in case you would like them, this is, obviously you can choose the garment that you'd like to put it on, but we created a state championship logo for them.
Hey Anthony, I don't know if you're, if you remember, but at Gillette that day, they had the boxes in back, and they had championship gear for all the games going through. And no, my daughter wouldn't let me out of the building without one, so...
Well, in case you wanna buy some more, Joe, there's the website where you can do that. If you'd like to come celebrate with us, on March twelfth, we'll be having a banquet here, six PM. The invites will be forthcoming, we're putting those together in a rather formal way. We also had Balfour Ring Company come in, the Johnson family, they've been a partner of ours for over twenty-five years at this point. Met with the team captains and picked out a new design for the state championship ring. That is something that, of course, we did some fundraising and so forth to make that affordable for every player, and the rings will be given out at that March twelfth banquet as well. They have seen the final design on them, they're quite impressive, I must say. We will certainly, as school committee members, give you formal invitations to the banquet, but want to give you a heads up of what was going on with that whole celebration, and certainly an opportunity for you to get some wares. On the sports front, oh, let me finish with the ten point four, the football state championship recognition, we made a mention in a previous meeting that we had been invited to the State House, Senate President Karen Spilka is in charge of that, and she is still determining a date, so we don't have a specific date yet, but we do know that it's forthcoming. And we'll keep you guys surprised when our team visits the State House for their recognition there. Obviously, State House visits, banquets, rings, clothing, does signify how significant it is to win the state championship in anything, but particularly in football, quite a remarkable achievement for the school as a whole, something that we won't soon forget, alright? I just had these pamphlets here, this is the program for the girls' soccer awards ceremony, I will pass them down and around unless Joe wants to deliver. But just as a reminder, our girls did win the Central Mass Division Three State Vocational Championship. And so, tonight they have their banquet, that's why perhaps here's some additional activity and culinary tonight, that was catered by Culinary Arts. Doc and I were, gave them a welcome, right before they, it started at six, as soon as this meeting started. But celebration going on as we speak for a fairly remarkable season for the girls' soccer team, and it's not every day that you put a new gold banner in the rafters for that level of championship, so certainly, quite a achievement, yes sir?
Is this our first time we won this to this extent?
It's the highest level we've won in girls' soccer, yes, it is, yeah.
It kinda looks like they were doing well in the, you know, the state tournament too.
Yeah, good for them.
Oh yeah, yeah, and that's what I'm referencing with the gold banner, if we won one thereafter, it's another year on the banner. This is a new, a new beast hanging in the rafters for... Yeah, very impressive, remarkable setup, girls there and a great coach, great support on that team all the way around from the parents. Athletic department, athletic director, obviously, she's a champion by her own right. And clearly, when you have that many teams, all of them actually in postseason play, she's a busy lady, Ms. Denise is a busy lady, and you overlap that with admissions and everything else, so... Can't say enough about our athletic programs in general, and certainly we highlighted a few standouts tonight. And our hockey team's on quite a roll, so we'll probably be playing hockey when, when the grass is popping back up at this time, spring and baseball season, hopefully, alright? Any questions on ten point three or ten point four? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to ten point five, I have one out-of-state field trip request, this is an annual trip that you have considered in as many years as I can remember the program existing, this is their cosmetology field trip to New York, where they go to the trade show, the cosmetology, cosmetology trade show for upperclassmen, the underclassmen go to the local one, but this is the big one in New York.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Handwriting, second by Mr. Levin to approve this trip. Questions, comments, discussion? Saying, you know, stating backstage access to tie it all in?
Oh yeah, they are well, well received there.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, the trip is approved.
That may be the shortest time I have spent at this table.
He is taking notes.
I don't know what happened.
Put a gold, put a gold banner.
Oh no, you know what happened? Mr. Handwriting over there, nope. Thank you very much, Anthony. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Levin.
This is gonna be at least an hour. Okay, we, the subcommittee met on the fifteenth, and it was a short meeting, you know, due to, you know, the facilities manager couldn't make it, so we had our, you know, he had talked with the telephone, gave us an update, and we went on our own little tour, we're comfortable with that. The roof inspection information he gave us is, we're starting a PM program, it's gonna be documented, we're gonna be doing it in the spring and in the fall. So we'll have, you know, traceability of what's going on, and the competition center, they did a complete cleaning. He said it was like, you know, over a week, they went up in the rafters, cleaned all the stuff on the rafters, all the windows, they did a complete, you know, head-to-toe, it hadn't been done in years, just, it's one of those things you don't do every year. And the snow removal equipment, I think is, I think we got five trucks now in the fleet, so we should be all set. We got, we got a plow for the truck that was donated, so we're all set there, and I don't know if you saw, are we in the front? The new security desk that's in the front of the building, can you come in? It was donated by the Furniture Trust of Boston, and, well, there was another, you know, on top of all the other, you know, additional things that were donated, Anthony, yes?
That particular unit actually was the more recent donation from the cell.
Okay.
Which is the parent company of Solid Works, they closed their operation in Milford. We jumped on the opportunity, they give us one day, December twenty-seventh, so Mr. Moore and I rented a rider truck and we went for it.
We got a pretty robust fleet, you rented the rider?
Well, let me say this way, Mr. Oliver, as much as you could fit in a truck, so we got the biggest truck we could get.
There you go, yeah, that's all.
But they donated four conference room tables, that reception unit and some other items, about fifty-five chairs. So we filled them, every truck we had, but, quite a generous donation, but...
It's top-quality furniture too. If anybody has a chance to see it, in the main lobby. If anybody has a chance to see it, in the main lobby. And also, too, is if you notice now, when you go by the dumpsters in the back, there's a big sign that says, you know, the cameras around the dumpster, I guess there's been people throwing stuff in our dumpsters, so they put cameras out there, big signs so people will know that it's out there.
Up tonight?
Up tonight.
Maybe.
Okay, and we have an automotive technology grant that Mr. Moran's been working on, they've been starting in automotive now, taking things down. They've been upping the ceilings, cleaning the place out, they're gonna be doing it over vacation, too. And they're gonna be redoing the floor and it's part of the diesel program.
We succeeded in securing the last capital skills grant, $125,000. Capital skills grant for the purpose of adding diesel technology courses, not a diesel program that's part of, will be part of AutoTech in their curriculum. Part of the renovations, obviously, recognizing the growth in diesel service and making some modifications to the shop to be able to pull heavy trucks in and be able to service. So part of what Mr. Lavine's talking about was some ductwork that was basically right in the center of the shop that was not necessary, was removed by our students and HVAC. And we, like other projects, we're doing as much as in-house as we can.
That's a good program. And last but not least, the facility subcommittee sits in this room many a time and we noticed this window, which you'd sit here and you look, you'd see the cabinet, just plain plywood behind. So that was one of the things that the committee had talked about. And Mr. Moran, as you can see, worked to have this done.
As the family, family of my students in designing with their laser vinyl cutter.
Wow, nice.
They also did dispensing windows, windows.
Yeah.
But they did this more in old paint to cover the wood, you could see all the time.
Yeah, but now professionally, it looks nice.
Nice, very nice.
And our next meeting is February 26th, if anybody would like to know, at five o'clock. And I'd like to thank Anthony for joining the group.
And missed the first meeting. Says traveling.
Every time you miss, it's five bucks. Okay, any questions? I mean, everything's looking good, we've been doing tours, keeping up with everything.
Any questions for facilities? Seeing none, we'll move on to the subcommittee, Mr. Lavine.
Oh, jeez, right, well, yeah. Okay, as you can see, we've already done the first round, two thousand, seven thousand, district-wide technology. We've had seven meetings as of so far and, you know, we're still going. Doc, if you want to, Anthony, you want?
No, you're quite right, it's in motion. And we're closely monitoring and doing what we can to influence anything happens at the state level. And to build a budget that is achievable, reasonable, cost-effective. It builds upon some of these donations that you heard about and the work done by the facility committee and others. We'll continue to advance the budget and we have our public hearing, everything, all part of the schedule that's built.
Any questions for the budget? Seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Lavine. Moving on, Dr. Fitzpatrick.
Item thirteen point one, committee, you have a document identified as an annual scholars' luncheon. And we were represented by Mr. Steele and Mr. Connors and the location coordinator. And if you turn over the cover page, you'll see the two students from Valley Tech that were recognized, Alex Goldberg and Zoe Mahone, okay? And this is a, kind of a really impressive recognition activity that happens in the colleges in Worcester. They rotate, usually some team with Olycras and Black, et cetera. And it's operated under the auspices of the Worcester County Roundtable, Super Tennis. So we've always participated, our enrollment allows us to honor two students and we're delighted to do so. Any questions? Any other comments on that?
I just think currently Zoe Mahone is our valedictorian and Alex is our salutatorian. It's likely they will finish up that way, statistically speaking, the GTA's or such, that it's likely that they will graduate that order. Those are our top two students from the GTA.
In a class of?
Class two thousand and ninety?
No, 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 how many, how many?
Three hundred.
Three something.
Jeez, I thought that question was too easy.
Almost.
I wanted to say approximately three hundred and eleven.
Okay, I got it, okay.
Give or take.
Thank you. Item thirteen point two, we are, as I mentioned during Mr. Lavine's presentation, budget, closely monitoring a variety of educational reform developments at the state level, contributing by written and verbal testimony and staying particularly active in that. We'll continue to do that, changes in the education reform of Massachusetts. Twenty-six-year-old education reform legislation drove the current situation. Almost everyone acknowledges the need to update and, but there is a lot of controversy over what needs to change, okay? We will continue to keep you posted on that and we'll be glad to share any of the documents that were against, any questions on that? Seeing none, item thirteen point three. In building the budget for FY twenty, we will work closely to one of the main subcommittees that we have, including the insurance advisory team, which has cross-representation from teachers association, retired staff members and administrators and business office people. We also regularly involve the insurance broker in this. And so on the date identified, the twenty-eighth, we will have the findings of the rate increases by our two insurance providers, Hyatt Pilgrim and Fallon. And we have been working over the past several months to secure the best possible rates. So with optimism, we'll wait to see what the numbers are and we'll build those into the budget. But we've been led to believe that we are in a far better position than we were a year ago, so. Questions on that? None, moving on. FY twenty, fourteen, thirteen point four, I believe, Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah, the budget dissemination process. We have a budget timetable for building it, but it's not uncommon that we receive periodic inquiries from the agents of our member town relative to a heads-up or, you know, their own calendar. In a random example, we have reached out to the chair of the finance committee in Sutton, who indicated last year on behalf of that finance committee that they'd like an advance, update, if you will, or picture of what Valley Tech's budget would be for the next year in advance of their standard budgetary union. And so we're negotiating a calendar date to work that out. The town administrator, Milbury, reached out and had a series of questions and we continue to work with him. One of his questions was involved in building, as he builds his budget, with one-time money, I think he has from snow and ice removal and other damage that the town may have suffered in one-time funds, whether or not he could commit some of those dollars to a renovation project at the Asia Waters Museum and was looking for help. Anthony and I have had conversations with Mr. Fallon, our vocational coordinator, who is, we're doing our best to provide that town manager with some information to help him on that project.
That's the kitchen project.
That is the kitchen project, a hundred percent right. In Milford, Chris Moran has been the long-term liaison, I think he's also chair of the finance committee, but he's been the liaison to the Valley Tech budget. He has indicated that he found it beneficial to come over, make sure it's a convenient day, have a working lunch in this very room to get a heads-up on that budget. Mr. Hyatt also mentioned that, but I'll leave it to Mr. Moran to decide just who we'd like to bring. That's fine with me, okay? So there's overtures there. Bellingham reached out to us, they had some interest in getting a sense of some information. And we promised to gladly share that one as well. Most recent connection we had there was acknowledging the death of the town manager's mother, okay? That's about it at this point, okay? There has been some conversation in Hopedale with Donnie Camosker, who's been the liaison from the finance committee there to Valley Tech, but it's been very supportive, okay? Can't think of any other inquiries as of this point. Any questions on that, okay? We will be working with each of our school committee members in any way you feel comfortable. Oh, I did also hear from Paul Flaherty, long-term chair of the finance committee in Upton, who actually retired from his business, I didn't, I discovered that in the phone call.
Really?
Okay, and he was also looking for whatever numbers we could give, an advanced picture, and has echoed his constant support of Valley Tech, okay, so, good stuff. Anyways, we will be providing you with the documents necessary to, we will be working with the certified dates of the warrants and everything else in our standard process. Any questions?
I just, you know, when Cheryl's sending out coordinate those days, just have her loop me in so I know, like, bincom meetings and things like that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You've done that in the past.
Yes, as calendars.
Over and above you, the town of Upton, not inside, okay? Any questions? Seeing none, moving on. We, thirteen point five. We recently had a teacher in service, the usual delayed start, and continue to be very proactive in making certain everyone is aware of.
We didn't change that, did we?
The sexual harassment?
No.
Yes, we changed that.
Hold on, let me rephrase it.
This one's forthcoming next.
Right, initially, we put this on the schedule for the previous in-service and then in coordination with the presenter, okay, this got moved to the next in-service. But the point being that we value the training and orientation and sensitivity of this to be significant in our own workforce as well as training our students to be recognizing the impact of inappropriate behavior along these lines in companies they run or companies in which they work. So this is now the next scheduled in-service activity.
Correct.
Item thirteen point six, in the documentary you have, you have a copy of a letter of outreach to Rockland Trust. I think most committee members are aware that we use a variety of techniques to raise additional money to complement the investment we ask of our tax payers through the assessment. And traditionally, the calendar, November, December, January, letters of this nature go out so that we have the benefit of knowing whether or not there'll be a cash support for something which we can indicate in our budget presentation to complement the investment. It's been what we see by our town and more often than not, the agents from the different banks, credit unions have been supported. We have a brand-new van, so we got at least one new, fresh spot for a logo. We do the logos as well, so, that's just a sample. If you are aware of any outside company, bank, credit union, or others that might have such interest, we'd be glad to at least explore whether or not we're used to pursue that. Any questions? Seeing none, moving on, item thirteen point seven. Given the fact that Congressman Richie Neal, who originally served this district, now redistricting, does not technically cover our district, but is someone that I've known for years, it's likely to be, to advance into the chair of House Ways and Means at the federal level before gridlock, kind of stopped a lot of activity at the federal level. I thought I'd draft a letter to him which have him give consideration to Valley Tech and Vocational Technical Education in the state of Massachusetts as a significant investment that could occur in his watch, kind of like the kind of things that Kennedy used to do years ago. And I'd be willing to go up to Washington DC or certainly meet with Richie Neal in his Springfield office, whatever was prudent. I have not had a response to that, I understand, you've got other things to do, you'll have just received it. So it's another outreach, another attempt to see if we can secure federal money as well as private money or state money. Any questions on that? Moving on. We have notifications of retirement which are flowing in as after the holidays concluded. We have a long-term bakery instructor, I believe is the most veteran teaching staff member at Valley Tech, as indicated that she plans to retire and she provided written evidence of that in chapter of item fifteen point eight. We only, you'll notice you look at my notation here that the letter announced a retirement but did not indicate a date of retirement. And I simply made the note that you really can't advance a retirement to the state retirement system without the specificity of knowing exactly when you retire because they do all their calculations on the service and contact up to maybe the day, you know, it's not the hour. So we asked the HI department to follow up, they did, and a verbally confirmed date of February twenty-fifth was provided, and so I added that to this letter. We are assisting the person in completing the master teacher's retirement materials based on that combination of information. Any questions on that? Seeing none, moving on. We just, more recently, as you can see, to a point where I didn't even have the chance to write a note on it because I was off-campus when this arrived today. We have a letter from another long-term staff member, drafting department, team leader, Mike Fennacotti, indicating that he plans to retire at the conclusion of the school year. And not a huge surprise, but maybe just a little earlier, that might be another year or so left here.
Fair to say?
Okay, right, and so we certainly will accept this and process it as appropriate. Any questions? It is envisioned that the retirement of a long-term bakery instructor will more than likely end up to be a posting of a vacancy in common arts of a similar nature. The posting here of a drafting change, they conceivably encourage us to look at the program and to see, you know, what type of configuration in the staffing pattern here is just, nothing follows. You also, it's conceivable that, given the duration that these people serve and the occupations they represent, we may be successful in securing new talent at a lesser cost. We'll see, that's another way, as Mr. Finson's shaving the budget requests as we build it, we'll see. Anthony's masterful at that and we'll see if we can't continue to strengthen our team, our quality of instruction and replacement and yet be cost-effective, okay? Any questions? Seeing none. We received a, sort of a surprise notification, in some ways, from the long-term health instructor, Judy LaValle. And in the nature of her communications, we respect her privacy, you know, and we'll certainly be completing the paperwork given this rather sudden announcement. But we respect this, we're certainly not, we are not critical of that development and we wish her well. Any questions on that? Another envelope that came in after the package we provided to you from long-term cafeteria support person, non-instructional, Shirley Witten, announced her plan to retire. She had indicated to me earlier in this year that she would be doing that, and so she's just going through. And like the Valley Tech family, although she didn't have an instructional role, she was a valued member and we wish her the very best. Are there any questions on any of those notifications? Those that I have as of like four o'clock today. Okay?
More filing up on your desk?
I was just saying, I was pretty afraid of what he's gonna find when he goes back up to his office.
Item thirteen point nine, you see a note of acknowledgement relative to memorial donations made on behalf of a retired instructor, I mean, also a graduate of the school, I believe. And for the benefit of the committee, we share item thirteen point nine and some of the donations that have already come in. Any questions on thirteen point nine? Seeing none, that concludes my report, thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is actually the old business for signing of the letter for the town of Upton.
Absolutely, people may recall that the Upton Motor Select Committee has a bylaw that when you have a function such as I go my dinner, where there is some alcohol present, even though it's secured by our staff, that the committee or the body proceeds.
I only, I only applied for one day of the license.
And that was active, but we.
Didn't have the letter.
We didn't have the letter, the petition for the signature which was provided today and now we can fully comply with that request, so. I thank you for your support, that updates and response to that, if you're interested.
New business? Anyone have any new business to bring forward for the committee tonight? Seeing none, Dr. Fitzpatrick, you have new business. Aside from the retirements. Aside from the retirements.
No. This is the new business of my name earlier today, as Anthony Steele mentioned. I attended a function with Bill Ricker where Governor Baker provided this letter of confirmation that Valley Tech had once again been awarded a major skills grant and a competitive grant. By the way, there's some things I should mention here about these skills. The governor is clearly quite proud of the fact that this has been added as an additional feature of his administration. But these notifications come with a relatively short turnaround period, requiring a detailed competitive application. And then, once awarded, as this one was awarded today, and I did share, to kind of give you an advanced knowledge that this award was in the works, but now we have, the gag rule is removed, this will go public now, the governor's office will have publicity on it over the next few days. But the other component of this is that you need to move quickly to implement or spend properly, consisting with the application, the grant. And so this puts a great deal of pressure on our facility subcommittee, on our administrative team, and many others, facilities, to the business office, to move quickly and to be in compliance and yet implement something. There is some misunderstanding by some who feel that money of this nature that the governor has created is an opportunity to pursue competitively, is advantageous to both tech school, but most non-voc environments are not eligible to grab it. But one of the many things we do here is we acquire major equipment items, in this case, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of capital items committed to the automotive program and a diesel expansion component of it. We then, therefore, will not be asking our towns for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We will be removing that to my budget. So theoretically, when we reduce a request of our budget, of our thirteen towns, that enables those towns to distribute money that otherwise might have gone to us for capital improvements, but they don't need to do that because we've got that money subsidized by the state. They can then distribute it, assuming they have some revenue, across any town department, including local school systems. So it has this ripple effect, you know, of a reduction of our request and technically, you know, a lesser impact to the member towns. That is one of the things we do relative to our budgetary plan. And there's the benefit of pursuing competitive grants, even though there's no convenience in this process. Another example of that is the way in which we are advancing not only next year's budget, it fires a reasonable conservative, without sacrificing the quality, and we're one of the few school systems in the state that continues to expand its student body every year. But we plan to incorporate in our budget the self-funding of the next roof component, which I mentioned in clear this is working on. So we won't be asking the towns for that either. So we continue to protect a fifty-four-year-old investment here and try to do that with a combination of some local money, complimentary money, or money that we raise, avoiding bonds and debts for them. So this hasn't gone unnoticed by our finance, a hundred and twenty-six finance committee members or others, but I want you to, I want to continue to, with your help and your support, we've been able to create a different way of pursuing a lot of the money that we raise and yet protecting this facility. And I recently went into a sister op-ed school of a similar age that desires, right? Not much younger than we are. And it was nowhere near the condition and we're not satisfied with our condition. We're eager to continue to make improvements, which is what you should do when the public's entrusted you. So.
It's been more than ten years, I think, since we've had a capital request of our towns.
I wouldn't be surprised.
It was in the early two thousands, I think, the last one I remember.
Yep, yep, the dump truck?
Yeah, it was a truck.
The dump truck.
Yeah, the dump truck was the last one. Early two thousands.
Who are you guys today? That's before my time.
That's the primary new business. Yesterday, we received the check, I see another item listed here. We got the communication and a copy of the check we received from, you know, the seventy-two-hundred-dollar grant from the Civil War, for the Civil War enactment. No, I'm sorry, American Revolution.
I don't know, they were fighting, it was in the field.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, if we never fought the American Revolution, we never got to the Civil War. That concludes my report, thank you.
Any other new business? Seeing none, items from the committee are available, feel free to take up a copy if you don't have one. You want one, you can. Cheryl or ask Dr. Cheryl for you. Next regularly scheduled school committee meeting is going to be on March seventh. Unless I am mistaken, without that being written here, that is also going to be our public hearing on the budget. That is traditionally why it's been moved, we move is to accommodate the calendar. As I catch that off. March seventh is the.
That's correct. Five o'clock, library.
Five o'clock at the library for our public meeting on the budget.
All right. We do need your attendance, attendance required.
Yes, we do, we do, we maintain a forum for that meeting as well. Seeing as we have concluded all the items on our agenda.
Thank you.
I make the motion.
Mr. Broderick, motion to adjourn.
You want to leave?
Thank you.
I have a second.
Yeah, I have a second for Mr. Brazza. All those in question, comments, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of the posts? Motion carries, and I would like to say, in the honor of Artie Moran, we are on time. Right to the minute.